Let's try to get situated here and get started. Okay, let's rise for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to everyone this morning to our monthly meeting. First item of business today will be approval of the minutes of our May meeting. All in favor or not? Do you oppose? Okay, we have the Morrison Reeves Library here today to talk about their plans moving forward to major work on the library. Met with Dean and had a brief conversation about what they're going to be doing. And so I do want to say before we start that they're not asking today for any kind of action on our behalf. This is an informational meeting and they'll probably be coming back in August or at some point later this year requesting some approval from us for what they're going to talk about today. So welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate your time this morning. My name's Deana Little. I'm the Director of Morrison Reeves Library. Today I'm joined with McCurdy, someone around here, the architect with OWC, and then Jason Kancel from Baker, right over there. They'll both speak as well as I continue through the presentation. I provided everybody with kind of a little packet there. Some of it is just for reading for you later, but today I have slides thrown out of the slides that we're going to go over, which look like this. And then there's also a packet that Baker Tilly created and Jason will review those with you. And then you also see there's a map. So the fancy one is for you for later reading and then the quarterly guide is just to share with you about all the awesome things at the library during the summer. So before I get started on the slide, I just want to share the purpose of the presentation. As Max was saying, is to introduce the project and what is happening with the library building, our plans to address the issues, and then what our financial outlook is in regard to the project itself. So I as the library here at the council meeting in Indiana, public libraries have limitations on their own capital projects and what they can fund, what they can borrow, and even the ability to spend their own revenues. So our board is an appointed board and we do have board members in the audience as well. So whenever we want to take on a larger project, it's our responsibility to come to an elected body. And for us, the county council is our elected fiscal body. So we want to make sure that you guys have enough time to ask questions. We can bring you more information about the project. So introducing it now in June and then coming back in August, hopefully will provide enough time for any more information that we need to share with you as that goes on. We're about 25% into the design phase, so it's very early day still for us. But in terms of funding the project, it takes a significant amount of time. So that's why we're coming to you now. All right. So do I just push the arrow buttons on the?
Some arrows?
No. A citation, Vic, yes. No, it's, it's leave its up and down.
All right. Thank you. All right. So this started in 2023. So under Indiana law, public libraries have to operate under strategic plans. Our last plan expired in 2022. So in 2023, we sought out community feedback about, hey, what's next for the library? What does a community want? And we engaged with over 1,000 people of through surveys, through community stakeholder sessions, through focus groups. We also did internal elements as well, engaged with our employees to discover, you know, what is it that is next for the library? On the next slide. So this next slide outlines some of the most important elements that the community expressed that they want to see their library develop or expand more on, such things as computer technology, their youth areas. So youth areas focused on early literacy and then the teen space. So like operational right now, we have some challenges in regards to how we serve our youth and teens. More robust local genealogy center. Our study rooms are being used about 33% more each year. So we're kind of overflowing our study rooms. So folks want more study rooms. Meeting spaces with technology. We do have one room right now that has technology and then a large room that has some, but there's small rooms as well. People are asking for that. People are requesting more interactive spaces. And then a small business space. A lot of folks come and use our library for things like faxing and printing and preparing things for their small businesses or their local businesses as well. So we kind of learned from this, like, okay, we have this great big space. We just need to change things around a little bit. However, at the same time that we were preparing the strategic plan, we noticed an increase in volume with issues with the building. We were having plumbing issues, mechanical failures. We were having roof leaking and the masonry was, you know, we're noticing some issues with the masonry. So we sought out Kevin McCurdy to perform a facility assessment on the building so that we could have a better idea of what is, what is the current health of the building? I mean, it's fine to want to make some changes internally and even aesthetic improvements, but what's actually happening with the structure of the building? And so we engaged with him in 2024 and that process took a number of months. And if you want to come and share kind of the outcome of that, and then I will get us through the slides.
So as you can see up on the screen is really just the age of the building. It's really, the most fun part of our job is really jumping into the planning and starting a new project, you know, when we really get a, kind of the, the sky's wide open, you know, you can start doing a project. But when you're looking at something of the scale that we're talking about potentially with the library project, it's always the most responsible approach to do just what Deana said, go in and understand what have we got? Because the last thing we want to do is start doing, I'll say, the fun work, you know, of expanding services, doing that kind of stuff, but miss items that need to be done on a building. What that can do is get an organization into trouble where they spend all of their dollars on, you know, things that again help patrons staff, but then miss if there's a major mechanical piece of equipment that needs to get serviced, fixed, replaced. And if that doesn't happen and they spend their dollars on new capital projects, they can get in trouble when it comes to the operations side. So that's where we jumped in and said, okay, let's really look top to bottom. So this was literally, we're up on the roof crawling around, we're in chase spaces, looking above ceilings. We engaged heapy engineering, so they looked at the plumbing, mechanical, electrical systems. So really everything from top to bottom. And I think you have a copy of that report or some components of that report. Ultimately, we're looking for what's the immediate things that need to be done. So those are like life safety things, ADA things, you know, are there things that aren't compliant with current code? Again, building may have been at the time it was built, but code changes over time. So just looking at that, because if we're going to do a major renovation, if there is something that's not compliant with current code, we're going to have to update that too. Then we look at like the three to five year, you know, these are things that if they don't start to fix them, are going to need some additional repairs to avoid additional higher costs, further deterioration, things like that. And then there's the five plus, well, these would be nice to have. And sometimes we find that while we think they may be a five plus, it may be this is so cumbersome for patrons or staff that that becomes more of a three year, or even this needs to be done soon to really help the, the library operate. We started looking at this and again, Deana brought up, what you're seeing on the screen are some images of the masonry. That was probably the big trigger point. And what you're looking at is actually imagery right there over that main bridge ramp where you come in. Again, we could see problems from the ground, but sometimes it's really hard to understand what does that actually mean? So we actually went in and did a little bit of removal of some brick and that's what you're seeing and got a lift up there to, to understand what was occurring. What you're seeing where the arrow is pointing is a pretty significant gap between the brick and frankly, the steel that should be holding that up. And you can even see that in the image there to your right. That's on the north side of the building, so not necessarily where the patrons come in. There's a lot of separation of that. Really what's happened is the building was built in the seventies, which was a bit of a transitional period, going from kind of that historic thick masonry wall to really a backup that's not thick masonry, but more of a brick veneer. Systems were changing in that time. How do we get water out of these? You know, how do, how do we vent these things? I would say today it's much different where you have a lot of weeps and a lot of vents. None of those exist on this building. So unfortunately, what you're seeing are the effects of water and moisture getting trapped in those walls and not being able to get out. So the water is attacking all the steel that's behind that. And if, I think you go to the next image as well, it shows.
No.
Okay.
Advancing. See if I can do it.
He's coming up to.
There we go. So again, looking down this, this side of the building as well, really all of those cantilevers, the cantilevers being where the bricks kind of hanging out there unsupported, all of that is entirely relying on steel that's kind of hanging out there. So when you see those images where the steel is starting to deteriorate, that's not a good thing in those situations. I think there's one more slide. Or not. When you look down that wall where you've got those cantilevers, it actually looks a bit like a fun house. Actually, what's happening are those cantilevers are starting to pull away from the building as well. So what started as we may just need to do some brick repairs became a, we have a structural problem in this building. So that's where I think we've got a lot of questions from people. Well, the building looks great. Why would you do what you're doing? That's the why we're doing what we're doing. It's not necessarily, as the saying goes, a vanity project. Ideally, we would keep the outside and do the internal fixes if we could, but we're just beyond that point unfortunately. In addition, there are some things that are not compliant with current codes. So again, as we go in, and again, I want to be clear, that doesn't mean the library is unsafe. It just means there are things we're going to have to address if we are undertaking a larger project as we're clearly going to have to do. What that really got us to is we acknowledged there was about $9 million worth of work that needs to be done to this building. That's without really doing anything that improves the patron experience. That's just, it needs roof repair, the brick that you were looking at, the structure that you're looking at. And that's really before you add on the contingencies, the safety factors we want to. Those were kind of raw costs back in 2024. As we looked at, if we were to go out to bid, those numbers would be closer to 15 million. So when you start talking about numbers like that, you really have to question, what are we doing here if we're not improving the staff and patron experience for a building that's 50 years old? So that was really the impetus for jumping into master planning. The idea here, big picture, is as you can see, we really wanted to go out and understand both from staff and community, what do you want the library to be? I mean, the library is 50 years old. Our experience, we work with a lot of libraries, both in Indiana and Ohio, and those are renovations, new facilities. What we're finding is they're not just libraries and repositories for books. That's still a part of what libraries do. But if you go back to the original, you know, the mandates for the Carnegie libraries, it was really providing access to materials that were too expensive for most people to have access to. So what libraries are today is really doing that same thing, but with more than books. It's books plus. So it is really library almost as community center. And some of that is even providing access to tools, to things you may want to check, technology, you know, wireless hotspot. So that was part of what we wanted to understand is specific to Richmond, what is community saying we don't have that we would like to have access to? Because again, it's too expensive for a family to own on their own. So that's what you're seeing, that there were six community forums. All of these were even very open. They were recorded, put online so that those that couldn't attend were able to view those. In addition, we put a lot of it online to get as much feedback as possible, in addition to the community engagement sessions.
Yeah, it's just, okay. That's all right. I can do it from here.
So what you're really seeing are, on the left-hand side is what the library is today. On the right-hand side, you're seeing what the library is proposed to be. The other thing, and just looking at a very high level, the colors. So you're moving from, you know, the color in the left existing is the same as on the right. So the red in this situation is actually the adult spaces. So the adult collection currently is on that upper level. That's what you're looking at there, just the upper floor. What happens is in this situation, the adult gets split. So a portion, the fiction is upstairs and nonfiction will move downstairs. You can see the children's in orange gets expanded. And again, that was a request of really the public to say, we really want more space for that. But what you're seeing are other colors coming up. The blue, but the, the more royal blue, it's not quite royal, is staff space. The cyan color, you can see a significant expansion of teen as well. Again, and that was just a request of patrons. But the green that's coming out, that's more of a marketplace. So that's really space where there'd be the ability to get something out of a vending machine, sit and meet, you know, with maybe a homeschool group or whatever that may be, and have connection to that outdoor space that faces Elstrow. Because the other thing you're seeing in purple then would be where now that's the children's outdoor patio space. That becomes access for general public, adults, anybody that comes into the library. The other big thing is really the entrance, even though that's a nice ramp there at the front, it really doesn't meet ADA requirements. It's a little too steep and too long. We're really looking at an entrance on the north side as well as maintaining the entrance on the south side. And part of that's getting a canopy for drop off, things like that, really acknowledging a lot of people are riding by cars. How do we make that experience better for folks that may have mobility challenges? So that's where you're seeing kind of a desk there in the middle where the green and the red come together to accommodate entry at both sides. Really a focus on how do we create some outdoor spaces, both for children's to have a dedicated outdoor space in the purple that's attached close to the orange there, with orange being children's. And then on the opposite side towards Elstrow, really leaning into what Elstrow has become and providing access and connection to the other community assets that are in that area. I go to the next one. This is probably the other big thing that we see. This goes back to what we talked about, that libraries are more than books. Books take a lot of space and that's totally fine. I mean, I think, you know, there will always be printed copies of books. But what you're seeing here on the left is the utilization of that space. Only 40% of that lower level is available to the public, 60% is staff. And a lot of that is just over time, things change, you know, there were books that were stored that aren't necessarily now. Really 80 to 20 is more the ratio you see with 80% being public and 20% staff. So that's really a big part of what this lower level change is about. You're seeing a lot of meeting spaces down there, but you're also seeing the yellow would be more of a history space, history genealogy. I think for those of us that have lived in the community long enough, I think we've all called Sue at one point and said, hey, Sue, do you have information about this? So I think that library as repository of Richmond Wayne County history is important to all of us. And so really leaning into that and making that more accessible. That's the other reason that the nonfiction moved down to really kind of create that partner, get a little more away from the front door and kind of create a space down there for that. But you can see in the light blue, there's a lot of large meeting spaces. Just for reference, the smaller room that has the round tables in it, that's about the size of the current bar meeting room, if you were to open up the side spaces. But there was an acknowledgement, my staff, that even with that, they're having, I'll say competitive, friendly competition for that space and the need to have a second option for that. So that's where you're seeing that larger space there, because even in the current bar room, some events push the size of that space. And we wanted to also allow, similar to upstairs, that purple space, that lower courtyard, really look at how do we allow events to flow between us? So the large blue meeting room is about the same size as the purple, so events can float in and out with a full set of people. But at a very high level, that's what we're doing. And ultimately, I'm going to say, those were the numbers that Deana is going to talk.
I was really fast, I can't see.
I thought it was right on cue.
I'm going to very briefly talk about the numbers and then introduce Jason up here to talk a little bit more in depth, because he understands it much better than I do. However, we wanted to share with you very early and, you know, crystal ball estimates of what the project will be. And then this slide specifically showcases the library's contribution to the project. As I shared earlier, there's legal limitations with how a library can contribute to its own capital project. There's actually a limit to how much we can even save, which doesn't make a lot of sense. Right in your head, you think, well, why can't you just save for these things? And it does make sense, but it's important to share that there are limits to how much revenue that we can save and hold in our back pocket. But we have been doing that over the years and we also have investments. So right now, the total estimated project cost, and that is with significant contingencies. We've been asked to add additional contingencies because of tariffs and inflation and that type. So you'll see the actual project of construction is a little over 16 million. And as Kevin shared earlier, a significant portion of that is just about the repairs of the building. So the additional is, okay, we're, we're investing in this project. Where are the patrons improvements? Where are the staffing improvements? The contingencies are around 7 million right now. Obviously, we don't have a crystal ball, you know, a year from now when it goes to bid. We hope that that's not the case, that we're not looking at 7 million in contingencies, but we want to build that in just in case. So soft costs around 2 million. And so we're looking at a little, a little bit under 26 million as a very high estimate for the project cost. And the next area on the bottom left is existing Morrison Reeves Library tax revenue that we have reserved available to contribute. It's a little over 1 million. This doesn't touch our operational balance. This is just money that we've put aside over the years for library improvements and rainy day. We also have investments, around four and a half million dollars worth of investments that we have available that we can contribute to the project as well if needed. So we would be looking at borrowing about 18.7 million for the project. And then just fees in terms of the cost of issuance is around a half a million. I can't really see the bottom numbers, I'm going to look at my slide. So we're looking at a total contribution of the project is around 23.8 million. I'm going to allow Jason to share the funding capacity, but just for context while he comes up here, if you look at the map, I just want to share this because I think this is important. Even though if you see on the map, it shows that Morrison Reeves is, is in the yellow, all the areas in green, we also serve. The areas in red are areas where other libraries serve. We actually serve a levy townships in Wayne County. That's kind of this unknown thing, people don't realize that. So even though we're focusing on, you know, this project says Richmond, it's a huge improvement for all of Wayne County as well. All right, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you very much and good morning, council members. Jason Tancel with Baker Tilly. And Deana's already provided an excellent overview of some of the costs and financial implications, but I will go a little more in depth as to the tax rate impacts and the bonding capacity of the library. Currently, the library has no bonds outstanding. And so I do want to reiterate that if we are looking at a bond, any bond in any amount would be an additional tax rate increase that the library would consider. As Deana has laid out, we are currently looking at a borrowing amount of $18,720,000. And with the, the gifts and grants and cash on here that the library is already contributing to this project, this will provide $23,815,000 for the. This bond would not anticipated to be issued until next year, 2026. And so if we were to receive approvals and move forward, this would not have a tax rate impact in 2026, but it would rather have a tax rate impact in 2027. This bond would also be a 19-year, six-month repayment term. The maximum that a bond can be in Indiana from repayment term perspective is 20 years. So this would go the almost full amount that is allowable to the library. And using a 6% interest rate, we would estimate the interest cost of this to be $13,854,000. I do want to stress here that that is a 6% interest rate. We are trying to provide flexibility and conservative estimates. Today, the interest rate market for a bond would be closer to 4.5%. So we are trying to be conservative with that estimate. But again, as Deana mentioned, right now, with this bonding amount and the cash contribution of the library, we are estimating a tax rate increase of 10.24 cents. But what does a 10.24 cent tax rate impact mean to taxpayers? We have another slide that is not within this presentation, but it is within the presentation that has a cover that looks like this. But we have a range of tax rate impacts to taxpayers within the library's jurisdiction that provides ranges of home values on an annual and a monthly basis, agricultural land assessments, commercial assessments, so on and so forth. Really just want to draw your attention to the fact that this 10.24 cent tax rate increase on the median home within Wayne County would be approximately $53.14. For the agricultural land, this was recently just modified from Centerville One. And agricultural land, we've provided multipliers. We have one acre of agricultural land, be it 100 acres of agricultural land. And you can see there that for 100 acres of agricultural land, this would be almost $202 per year. And then finally, on our last row, for commercial business property, this would be $102 a year of a tax rate of what the tax dollars would mean for this tax rate increase.
Turn it back over to Deana.
All right, sounds good. So as Jason shared, we are not currently, we do not have a debt. It's actually been 50 years since we've asked for a bond or incurred debt. So I hope that showcases that we're very fiscally conservative in terms of how we operate the library. We work within our means. We wouldn't be here and talking about this project if we didn't think that was absolutely necessary. You know, we're going to be putting netting on the library entrances pretty soon for safety. We're seeing significant issues with the building. As Kevin shared, it's not a vanity project. We're here because we need to, in order to continue to provide services with Morrison Reeves. So again, we wanted to make sure that you had plenty of time for questions this morning and then obviously over the next month as well. I'd be happy to return in July if you reach out with more questions. There's more images in your packet regarding the facility assessment. If you wanted to see the full assessment, I'd be happy to send it along. I didn't print copies because it's, it's a beast, but I can send you digital copies of that as well, if you want to see the full ray of what's happening with sort of. For me, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have now or you're.
I've got a question. Belle Creek School Corporation serves Doughton, Perry, Clay, and Harrison Township as well with Jefferson. Those kids use Jefferson Township Library. You contribute what to that library?
Is this a school library?
No, it's a, it's township library.
Hagerstown. Oh, Hagerstown. So Hagerstown Library is, is a separate library.
Right.
We are, yeah.
But these four townships go to school at Hagerstown. What do you contribute to the Jefferson Township Library that benefits those four townships?
So we have an engagement team whose job is to reach out to communities that don't have an existing physical library. We also have digital materials that we share. So we expand our digital offerings basically for folks that are outside of our area to those other townships as well. We're actually going to be getting a kind of a 21st century bookmobile. I don't know if you're familiar with the bookmobile that we had many, many moons ago. We're bringing something similar like that back at the end of the summer so that we can go out into the communities that aren't able to come into the library as well to bring print materials back and forth, especially for those areas that maybe they don't drive or, you know, maybe they're farmers or the Amish community. So that's where we're at right now in terms of reaching out to some of those areas that are a little further out of field.
I understand what you're saying, but.
I think his question result revolves around the levy on these townships for the contractual library.
Yeah, that's, it's not a physical library.
Not really using your library is what he's saying. They're using Hagerstown Library.
Okay, I understand.
Hagerstown Library is financing the support for all these registered students without the revenue.
Yeah.
And you're getting the revenue.
We are. You know, that was established years ago in terms of what Richmond is supporting, what Hagerstown is supporting. We all share materials. We're all part of the Evergreen system. So in terms of revenue and what it goes towards, Hagerstown and Morrison Reeves and Cambridge City and Centerville Library and Dublin, we all share the same materials. We borrow out and distribute materials as well. We are providing support to one or two capacity, but we all have different budgets.
Well, this struggle, we had a, we had a bookmobile.
Yeah.
That served these individual communities. We don't have that anymore.
You are bringing it back at the end of August. We've been able to finance that through mostly non-revenue funding where it's being built right now. It's not going to look the same. It's going to be more accessible, but we're going to be bringing materials back out into those communities that can't reach towards us. Or like you said, maybe they're going to Hagerstown because it's geographical closer to them. We're going to be. We're gonna be serving those communities more successfully in the future by the end of this year.
Appreciate that because I don't feel like these townships got the benefit they was paying for.
Which is why we're bringing the bookmobile back. Absolutely.
So the increase that you're talking about on will not affect the contractual line item?
Yeah. It's just through the Morrison Reeves.
So it's just for Wayne Township? Is that where that?
Just for the tax impact, it's just Wayne Township. Yeah, we are not touching the Wayne County contractual tax impact. It's a separate budget. It's just not. It's not a significant amount. It wouldn't have an impact if we were to have two bonds, or it just, it wouldn't make sense. Man, that's a good question.
Misty?
Yeah, I just, so the, under the gifts and grants, are those dollars that you're expecting to raise from the community?
No, we already have it.
So will you continue to raise, or you're just saying we're done at 4 million?
It depends. You know, if when we get to that point where we're starting to see actual costs come in and we think it's gonna be much higher, we hope to have a little bit of time. But if we're not able to reach that, then we'll have to reevaluate what the project is. We may have to cut a couple of things out.
Sure.
Yeah. Because once we've committed to the bond amount, anything more has to come from us. But we're not gonna plan on a fundraiser or anything like that currently, but that's where we're at.
Other questions? Jason, I'd like for you to review again the impact on the homes and agricultural land and what it would do as this personal property versus real property.
Absolutely. So the annual impact on the median home value in Wayne County is $53.14.
What is the median home value in Wayne County?
For the U.S. Census Bureau, it is approximately $136,000. For 100 acres of agricultural land, on an annual basis, this would be $201.85. And then on commercial property, this would be $102.40.
For what?
So this is, this is actually dollars paid from this new levy that the library would would...
And on the business, you say $102?
Annually paid, so of an increase of property taxes paid.
Of real property? Just a little bit on your total financials, the impact that the budget or the caps have on your budget as well as what you see coming because of Senate Bill 1?
So in terms of the future forecasting, we're currently lose about 33% of our property tax revenues through tax caps. I've, and kind of forecasting around, maybe if we lose 50%, I mean, that's kind of a high estimate that Jason and I have discussed in terms of, you know, if we bond, what would that look like? It'll be challenging, but we would still be able to operate. Now, I know there's also concern about the local income tax. Right now, we, most of our revenues through property tax and local income tax. We don't have a lot of other tax revenues. That's pretty much it unless people want to donate, or the friends in the library able to work and provide funding for us as well. So when, one of the other changes to SEA 1 is that libraries will need to go to their councils, I believe, starting for 2028, to negotiate what lit might be for us. So that would, you would see all of the libraries in my county at that point. There would be kind of a pool for us to share, and we'd go from there. So it would be even more challenging if we lost lit as well. I mean, those are our two main sources of revenue, our property tax and lit. So I could, you know, I would have a crystal ball. The project is a separate element for us. We're spending around $100,000 a year between repair and lack of energy efficiency in our current building. So the improvements would help us save money in that, in terms of our operating cost. But I, you know, I have forecasted, I actually have pronounced if you want me to share it out in terms of like, here's where we're at now if we didn't see any impact. Here's where we would be if we lost about 50% of our property tax revenue. Here's where we'd be if we used our lit. If we lost both our lit and we had a higher tax impact on our property revenue, our property tax revenue, we would have to save, cut about 16% to 18% of our operating spending, which would be significant, but we would be able to continue to operate. We would just have to kind of negotiate and reprioritize.
So currently, what's the percent of your revenue, property tax versus lit?
That's a good question.
Currently, the library's general fund levy is about $2.5 million, and the local income tax that the library is able to receive today is approximately $600,000.
Thank you. Additional questions?
No, I guess I just want to make sure, I'm grateful to see so many people in the audience supporting Morrison Reeves. But I think the reason Max is asking that question, just for the audience watching and here, is every taxing unit is having to look at how to respond to Senate Bill 1. And so one of the things we've talked about is bringing all taxing units in to talk about the impact, because what I don't think we want to see is, oh, you're adding a tax, and then we might have to add a tax, and then another taxing unit adds a tax. And the impact overall for all of our community could be devastating if we don't do it properly or as partnerships. So I think this is, I mean, while it's timely, I think one of those conversations is just how does this impact overall for everything as we move forward?
Yeah, the timing is very challenging.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And the state has put back onto us this opportunity that people may think that we will want to implement an income tax that we don't get the revenue for. So that'll be a, that'll be a tough decision and discussion leading up to whatever action we either take or don't take.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, it's challenging times, and there's still a lot of unknowns. And we'll see what changes to legislature over the next couple of years as well.
So I would encourage anyone in the audience or in the public and TV or whatever to get with the library, get with Dina, ask her questions, be prepared for a public hearing that will take place when they do return. If that's August, that'll be advertised, whatever it is, it'll be advertised. The opportunity for anyone to speak pro or con on the issue will be a part of that discussion. But leading up to that, I would encourage anyone that does have questions to get those answers to better understand what this need is at the library and how they intend to take care of that. Anything else that we need from the library at this time? Appreciate you folks being here.
Thank you.
If any additional information that comes up that you feel would be important to us or of interest, please forward that.
Absolutely.
And we'll look forward to seeing all of you in post.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rickamoff.
You have your bi-weekly project sheet in front of you. Any...
Just have a couple of lightables left on that. Doubt that project. Fairgrounds parking, we're waiting on the drainage plans. I know that Brandon and the Highway Department have been particularly slammed with the right-of-way permits that they're having to process for fiber installation. Brandon indicates last week we got about 75. So their time's been taken with processing those permits. So as soon as they get a leg up on that, they'll get back on our drainage plan. The maintenance fence around the maintenance building, the security fence, the commissioners had received quotes, they've taken those under advisement as they consider that. Courthouse front entrance, if you've looked at the process or the project, the outside walls have been poured and finished, and now they are laying the foundation. I think it should be poured this morning on the center planning area, and then they'll go to the steps. We do have a prox meeting that's pouring at 10 o'clock with our, with LWC, our engineering firm, as well as the contractor. Prox card lock system, talked to the contractor on that. They still anticipate they'll be finished by the end of this month. The commissioners will get what I think will be the final look at the proxy card policy today and have that prepared for passage. Max, I did send you a copy of it, as well as there'll be a time here in the next couple of weeks that we will need to get proxy card issued for each one of you folks as well.
Okay.
And then the courthouse elevator, still awaiting as the bid information back from LWC on that. And again, just as soon as we have financial estimates on that, you'll be into the loop.
Is the flu removal the next phase of that?
Harvey?
The flu would, removal will be the next...
The next bid will be the flu removal as well as, remember this is gonna stop at the first, second, and third floor. The second floor has that large Civil War mural that needs to be moved. So, because that's where the door would be for the elevator. So that is part of this bid as well, moving. And the commissioners will be discussing that today of where that would be relocated in the courthouse. I did put in the lower right-hand corner just so you can keep track of your funds there. The lower right-hand corner has your current balance as of yesterday and your council one-time funds. But I also did put, remember you made a commitment, or at least you indicated where you're gonna pay for the police vehicles out of that. So that number below that is what you've committed towards that current balance, just to keep you up to date on that as well. Any other questions? Thank you.
When I am a new business, I feel that had been all placed on my agenda. Ron, you've got a presentation briefly here.
Briefly, I'm here, you need to reappoint your two extended... ... commission. Remember, capture TIF, says TV. So... Terribly active, we have a spending plan that we'll start working on that will depend on what we could see now. Probably pick up on is concern everyone has, except the one. I think the capturing of funds is essential to maintain needed, let's still make some capital requirements that we can in this bid, that we can. But we will be developing another spending plan just as we did last year that has to be by December 1 that will... If you build the outline of expenditures for 2020, so the step basically is reappoint your representatives. They are, they serve a one-year term until their successors are elected and qualified. So basically, your one-year term will end next January, so you've got five months. How do you... Keep it going.
Any questions, Ron? I have here the certificates of appointment for...
I would just add the rest of the commissioners for the benefit. Something you... The commissioners have three appointees. They are Jeff Blaster, John Cady, and Kyle Clark. Kyle, that's somebody who serves as president of the commission, Beth is vice president. I have contacted to those individuals, and they are willing to serve again for, so there's the flexibility on that board. I think the reason that isly conservative is fact that our funding opportunities that the state's reminding us of better utilize.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve signing these certificates of appointment for Beth and Gary for the commission?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? One? Always in favor, I?
I'm just making sure they said yes.
Probably a good idea. Two, right, Dave. I'll get these signed, Ron, and... Thank you.
We need to have a motion to recommend capturing 100% of the revenue. You don't need that, I think, you know, I think you're the two appointees, so you determine what you think you need to represent the body that appointed you. So I'll tell you why I need to do it, I mean, but I think the commissioners are endorsing that concept. It's just what has, where did have the, if you will, the ramifications of Senate Bill 1 to concern us, also it. So like a discussion on that topic, it certainly be appropriate.
There will be some major expenditures happening in industrial park in...
Well, hello, we have the...
The water system.
Water system. On all of that, did I have?
If someone wants to make a motion to that recommendation to them, we'll accept it. Otherwise, I think Gary and Beth understand their wants and desires, and that will be carried out fine.
I'd make that motion sideways. It's clear councils intention is to capture that, so I'll make that motion.
Not second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend that the commission capture the full amount of TIF funds that are available to be collected. Always in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blaster.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Just a couple of quick things. I hope we're in the midst of planning for several projects in addition to the thing that Steve has already alluded to. And I just want to put those on the front burner, so to speak. I sent out to you earlier this week some information about a request for funding from Help the Animals. If you'll recall, Help the Animals is the organization that the county has contracted with to house animals that the sheriff's department has had to pick up for one reason or another. We have a very good working relationship with them, and they've got some needs, and we're in the process of looking at that. Wanted to get that on your radar. It's a total project of about $48,000. So we'll be looking at that, and the commissioners haven't discussed it in any detail yet. So, fiscal body, we wanted to bring that to your attention. So we'll be looking at that in more detail in the coming weeks. We have a request from Union County Transit. It has not been a particularly vocal issue in the past, but we have contracted with Union County Transit for many years, I want to say about 15. And they actually have vans and drivers that you can call, and they'll come pick you up and take you to a doctor's appointment or what have you, and bring you back for a small fee. We subsidize that $10,000 a year. It's been $10,000 since its inception. My guess is that they may be asking for more than $10,000 going forward, but we're gonna have them in to give us a report on how many people they've transported in the last years and listen to their request. We'll let you know. In fact, I talked to Max earlier this morning about the possibility of inviting them to come to a workshop so that we're all here to hear that presentation. I think you're all aware of issues with WCTV and their funding. That's something that we're gonna need to address in the not-too-distant future. We've been looking at the franchise fees that we collect. It is somewhat sporadic, and the Comcast, which has always been the mainstay of our franchise fees, has been going down over the years. our franchise fees, has been going down over the years. But we are now getting some franchise fees from Charter as they've come into Wayne County and are not only providing internet, but also some television services. Again, it varies a little bit depending on how many people are, are signed up with those cable companies, but this past year it was about $32,000. We have committed $25,000 for 2025 in operational support. We also gave them $35,000 this year for equipment purchases. So that will be on the table, discussion of, of how we want to handle that. Again, our, our estimate would be at current levels in the low $30,000 range for franchise fees, but the legislature this session reduced the franchise fees by 20%. So it'll go from a 5% franchise fee to a 4% franchise fee. So that will reduce the amount of money that, that we have available. So again, we'll, we'll need to talk about how we want to approach that. We are in the midst of discussions. WCTV has made a proposal to us for approximately $40,000 a year to do the, the videography and, and streaming. We feel like we have a pretty good handle on that. We've been kind of practicing over the last month, month and a half. It seems to be working fairly well. The one equipment purchase that if we, if we do this ourselves, that we would need is probably to invest in a new owl. I think the one that we're currently using is 10 or 12 years old. The technology has improved fairly significantly, I'm told. So we'll be looking at that and, and talking to you all about, about your thoughts there. Health insurance, we're in pretty good shape with health insurance. The reserves that, that we need to maintain are climbing this year. We're, last week we were at about $3.9 million. We will be having discussions with Dunn or Administrator X week or two. We'll let you know when that meeting is going to be. Not sure yet whether it's going to be as part of a commissioner meeting, but want you to have the opportunity to participate in those conversations as we, as we hold those. We feel like we're in pretty good shape financially with the, with the health insurance program, but you know, it, it can vary dramatically from year to year depending on the health of our, of our employees. So we'll have those discussions. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about is financial planning. I know you've, you've been working with Baker Tilly. I think we have talked in the past a little bit about trying to provide information for all of the taxing entities in the county. I'm not sure whether you want to go through Baker Tilly to try to provide that, whether you want to work with the AIC or the Commissioners Association has some folks that are becoming better tuned in to what the implications are. I think most of us know that, that there were changes at the, in the last week of the legislature that, that changed some of our scenarios. We were anticipating about a $2 million decline in the county's revenues initially. My assessment of that is some of the changes that were made could allow that to be reduced closer to the $1 million mark. But again, I may or may not be aware of every single change that, that has taken place. So we want to, we want to get some more qualified perspective on that and we want to be able to share that with, with the other taxing units. So I guess I'm asking you if you have a preference on how we go about that. As the fiscal body, if you all want to organize that, that's, that's fine. If you'd like the commissioners to, to do that, we can do that, but I don't want to step on anybody's toes there. And Barry, I think you were taking the lead on some of that conversation with Baker Tilly.
Yeah, we have a, well, I've contacted Baker Tilly about updating the data in the report based on the, the final hours of the session and what impact it would have. We've also received a, an additional scope for financial planning for Baker Tilly on council's behalf. We've not taken action on that. I reached out to Jason again this week. I think he's on vacation. I'd really like for him to come back, meet with council and commissioners as a whole, maybe at a workshop, so we're not duplicating efforts here. Then we, you know, the, both, the 10 of us, as you say, can make the decision if we want to engage Baker Tilly for that purpose or if we want AIC or commissioners to do that.
Steve, Board of Accounts has scheduled a meeting for the 21st of June for council. It's a statewide meeting to talk about the ramifications of Senate Bill 1. I did contact DGLF two, three weeks ago requesting them to come and talk with us about this. After being shifted to two or three different people, I did find out that they are not going to be doing that, but they strongly encouraged that we, as council, attend that meeting on the 21st. Currently, I know four of us have reservations for that and if any of the others could attend, I'm sure that that would be a very worthwhile meeting. Jeff Cap and I attended, and I believe Kathy was at the last year meeting, and it was very helpful. And with all the changes that's coming about, I would encourage everybody that can to be at that meeting on the 21st.
I'm planning to attend as well. I think it's, you know, important that we're all on the same page about what exactly is happening and what the implications are for us and for the rest of the county.
It'll be good to participate in the discussion because there'll be questions from council members all over the state of Indiana. Some of their issues would be probably similar to ours. Some of them might not, but taking part in that discussion would be, I think, very helpful and we'll hopefully know a lot more after that meeting on the 21st.
We'll say that, that both folks at the AIC and at the Commissioners Association and I'm on the legislative committee for both of those groups, they have asked that we, we, as we identify what is the, the implications for us, what exactly has, has this cost us in terms of funding? They want to know what those details are. Their speculation, just as you mentioned, is it will impact each county differently and probably each city within those counties differently depending on their, their current makeup of, of property tax versus income tax and so on. So they, they want to gather that data so that they can be prepared to go back to the legislature next year and, and ask for any modifications to legislation that might be necessary, might be helpful.
I will say that in my communication with DLGF that they indicated they're still working on trying to get the details put together out of this legislation and so they're not really ready to answer all these questions yet.
But if you, if you look at, they send a weekly email and right at the top of the email, it says, "We're still trying to figure out what, what all these legislative changes mean. Please don't contact us with questions right now."
Embarrassing.
We'll share it with you when we.
It's embarrassing. Sorry. Not on us, on them.
Exactly. But it's, there are a lot of moving parts there and.
And I'm thankful it's being recorded for me to say that.
Just a couple of other quick updates and there are a lot of initiatives and you're hearing some of those on housing. We are involved in some of those, most particularly, most recently, the Housing Accelerator where we're working with developers and builders to, to try to incentivize construction of, looks like 82 single-family homes. We're committed to $650,000 of consolidated edit and $170,000 of county edit. We have an additional $830,000 of county edit that is committed to housing infrastructure. We're kind of using these first allocations as kind of the, the guinea pig, the, the trial to see if we want to commit the others in a round two that might come later. We're talking to folks about the possibility of forming a land bank. As you know, every year we have typically have a commissioner sale. Those properties that, that have, have been sold in the commissioner's sale could also go to a land bank. The land bank would have more flexibility in how they dispose of those properties to their, their best advantage. And so we're looking at that to see whether that makes sense for the county, but also for the towns who have, you know, issues with dilapidated blight that, that they may or may not be able to deal with through a land bank. So we're, we're gathering information. We'll share that as it becomes available. And then there's also a ready grant application and the ready grant with the change of administrations kind of came to a screeching halt while it was being reviewed by the, the new administration. We think that, that some of those firms are about to be freed up and invested by the state. We did apply for a, a grant through the Lilly Funding. Lilly Foundation contributed $250 million on a statewide basis for blight elimination and I think of the, the term, but artwork essentially. And as part of that grant, the county is working on a, and the region is working on a, a public art plan to move forward, but our grant is, is focused on blight elimination, downtown revitalization and, and some housing initiatives. So again, as those, as those ready decisions are made by IEDC, we'll be getting more information to share with you. That's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Yeah, I do. And I, so back to the WCTV, I know we'll talk about the help contract more, but the WCTV part, how many? So that proposal was based on all meetings currently that they cover. So what is required by the law? Because that might be different, look different.
Well, it's, it's based on a guesstimate of, excuse me, how many hours.
Right.
That it might require. And you know that sometimes your meetings last 15 minutes and sometimes they last two hours. Ours extend considerably beyond that. And again, sometimes they're 30 minutes. I think commissioners like to say that when I'm not there, they, they're very short.
Or maybe.
We may have to start limiting time on how long comments can be for Nikki Bunschire.
So, but, but as far as the.
It's a guesstimate.
That's going into place for July, is it just county council and county commissioners meetings that have, so any.
Meetings and, and again, we're trying to work.
All public meetings?
If they're held in this chamber.
Ron?
Ron?
We're trying to work through the county attorney. I usually have a guesstimate and it's literally a simple matter of going through and you see which boxes that the organizations check. They're not required, it's important to understand, if they haven't been meeting in our chambers, they're not required to meet just because they're a public entity. Whoever they choose to meet are available to them, so.
But the Plan Commission, the BZA.
Some of our health, easy ones.
The Health Board meets in here, all of those meetings.
And that, I think that was a part of the proposal, but I just didn't know if that, again, I think my question is if it's just, if the spirit of the law is that we are looking at just city, I mean, just council and commissioners, but it sounds like it's not.
Not at all.
Much broader.
That's not the spirit of the law.
Okay, okay. And, and then is it required then too that it has to be, once it's, I mean, we can livestream it, but does it have to go to a place that people have to access?
And we do that now. We've been doing that.
So, so you're saying the county has the staff, the manpower to take away from the IT department without overtime or any of that? And we can talk about that later. I guess that becomes my question.
I believe so.
Because I'd like to see the comparison if we contract it with WCTV versus what we're doing on our own. Because I don't, I mean, I would just like to see the comparison.
We can do that.
Yep.
Anything else?
Yeah. Jeff, you have any numbers on the animals we take to the help, help center?
Yes, and I don't have it with me this morning, but you saw in the, in the documents that I sent to you earlier, 331, I think, was the, the number of, of animals that were taken in and 150 of the dogs were, were, I'm sorry, 331 was the number that they adopted out. 150 of those were dogs. I have a report. It's, it's in the hundreds and we are currently paying them $200 for each dog that we take them and $50 per cat. But we also just this year started an additional $100 for any of those animals that, that we take them that need to be spayed or neutered. And that's usually 80 or 90% of them need to be spayed or neutered. So most of the, the dogs we're paying $300 apiece for and we'll end up spending about, we're on track for a little over $50,000 for this year. But again, it varies so much from month to month that it's hard with only one year of experience to know exactly where we're going to. Part of the, part of the issue with comparing beyond 2024 back in time is that the shelter that we, we used then frequently told us they're full and they can't take any more animals. So they didn't. And so we don't know how many we would have taken them if we'd had space. Help in, in 18 months almost has never turned us away. They've always found a way to accommodate our needs. So I'll, I'll update the numbers. There's a monthly report that, that the invoices are based on. They took this many animals at, at this rate, so I can get that for you, Gary, and I'll get it out to all of you.
Good question. He said, we, I was looking at your email. We, they, we sent them 331 animals, 150 were dogs.
Sorry, that, that's how many animals.
Yeah, so do they not charge us for those other animals? The cats or whatever it is?
$50 a cat.
Okay.
But those are not animals that we took to them. Those are the, 331 is the number that they.
Oh, they adopted out. I'm sorry.
Out.
I'm sorry.
I don't think it mentions that because initially it wasn't directed to the county.
So the request is on top of, like, we're, we're saying it's $50 a cat, $100 a dog, and then the request that you're coming to us for is on top of that.
But again, we're just at the very beginning stages of discussion. We haven't had any discussions with help yet. Talking to the foundation that the request originally went to the foundation. So we will try to answer your questions if you share those with us. Commissioner Dwinger has some good ideas, I think, in, in terms of how we might approach help and, and negotiate on what we can do, but the, the key for me is we want to make sure that they're able to continue to take all the animals that need to be taken there. Having space is, is one of those issues and this, to address that.
And the city currently doesn't use it.
No, they, it's a place in, in Henry County.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other announcements or questions? Do we have any other announcements or questions from councilman? Do we have anyone in the public that has anything for our, our meeting here? No, we have a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourned.